We want to welcome you to our city commission study session. We ask that you turn off for silent cell phones. Meetings are televised every day on channel two at six P. M. and then midnight also available for viewing on YouTube. At this time, we have three items on our agenda. The first item on the agenda will be the countywide transportation study update.
Jeff, why don't you come up here? Have a seat where you can also advance the laptop. Mr. Mayor, Commission, excited tonight to introduce in a second here Jeff McCaro. And is Jane going to come up as well?
No, I'm just kidding.
Okay. Jeff McCaro from Kinley Horn to go through sort of an overview of where we are with the countywide transportation study. Before we get to that, just briefly, two years ago, almost to the date, there's an item before the city commission asking for us to look at a countywide transportation plan. At that time, I had indicated at that meeting two years ago that KDOT and the Mid-America Regional Council had stressed the importance of a countywide transportation plan to stakeholders in Leavenworth County for years. The creation of the plan is a requirement of project funding, support, and eventual construction of countywide transportation projects. At that time, we indicated that KDOT and Mark had continually advocated for a countywide approach of collaboration among cities in the county. And to that point, we had not had that in any cohesive manner. About one year later, on April 26th of 2022, it was before the commission to look at the scope of services, the selection committee's determination of Kinley Horn and Associates as the firm to lead the process. The scopes of services and the fee was negotiated. And then we had an M. O. U., memorandum of understanding, Leavenworth County, Tonga Noxie, Lansing, Baser, and the City of Leavenworth to engage Kinley Horn in that process. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jeff McCaro from Kinley Horn to give you a project update of what's been going on.
Thank you very much. Pleasure to be here this evening. It is springtime, so you'll see me drink some water. Just pardon that, but you get that allergy cough sometimes. Step back a little bit. I think Paul did a great job giving a little bit of background there. And a lot of this comes down to the questions of funding and specifically being successful in getting funding from other sources. When you think about competitive funding applications with KDOT, with the Mid-America Regional Council, or even for larger projects with the federal government directly, the more collaboration that you see, the more united front makes your projects that much stronger, that application process. So to go forward, even if it's a project not in your community, but if you've worked together and to say, you know, something for this region, we know this project is important. We're going to voice our support for that. That's going to make that much more likely to get funded. So that really is kind of the basis for what we're going to look here. In addition to that was a little bit of just kind of getting everything up to date. So we looked at more than 20 years worth of plans that had been, people have talked about, dreamed about, some were initiated by local communities, some by the county, some by KDOT, some by private citizens to say, what are some visions we have for that? Well, let's kind of get that focused a little bit and start to evaluate those and evaluate those process for the projects in ways that are calculated. And then we can start talking about what priorities you might have. So with that, well, tonight, we'll try to go through and we'll talk a little bit about our approach, kind of where we're at, a recap of some of the engagement that we went through quite a bit last fall to reach out to the communities. We'll talk about how we consolidated those 20 years worth of plans into a single list of projects and how we started to evaluate those and how you can start to prioritize what's important to you. What's important to you might be different than what's important to the Mid-America Regional Council, say, to KDOT and to the federal government. So every one of those agencies where you're looking for additional funds, they have their own sets of value, but that doesn't mean you don't have a set of a value that's just as important as your evaluate projects. And we'll show you a draft of where we're at in our tool development. As we go through some of the meetings that we're having, we're getting some good feedback from people, we're making some adjustments. You'll see a lot of information tonight that we'll actually, you'll be able to dig into in more detail online. It'll be visible for everything as you go through there and how we calculated different factors and how you could change your priorities and it might change the ranking of projects that you might consider. So our approach as we started this project, we really focused initially on two different things. On one side, we just started to define the criteria, the criteria that the federal government looks at, KDOT, Mid-America Regional Council, and also gained some input on some local criteria. What did some people, as we went to meet with stakeholders, what did they find important to themselves? Simultaneous to that, we're going through those 20-plus years of plans to really evaluate and define the projects, understand those impacts where they're at, so that we could start to come up with our prioritization tool analysis to look at. And where we are today is right here. So we're not done with this process. We are open for feedback and comments. If there are things we're missing, if there are other information to dig into, we'll hit on some of the things we've heard over the past few days. We've got a few more meetings yet this week to really gather some input. So please feel free to, it's a work session, interrupting whenever you'd like to dig into more details, happy to take those questions to go forward while also being respectful of your time. We had a series of stakeholder meetings. Those were actually held virtually late October, early November, where we met with a lot of folks from different industries, from economic development corporations, school districts, elected officials, not necessarily here within the county, but actually your neighbors, because some of the projects really do overlap with those as well, and the KC ATA and some of the transit surveys that have been talked about. There's some themes we heard. One very strong came out was the importance of connections between the communities. Now, to go from Tonga Noxie to the City of Leavenworth, that being an important route, how do you do that? And to keep that in mind. The importance of K7 came up, as you think about that as being that principal north-south way to get anywhere right now in the county. There was a lot of support for bicycle accommodations, but also that balanced the quality of life. And there's a lot of the county that's still rural and they want to maintain that atmosphere as well. We heard that MODOT really doesn't have any plans right now to extend Route 152 west across from the Zuri River, but there is some localized interest. City of Parkville expressed some interest to see that happen. We also heard a lot of desire for that enhanced regional access over to Route 152 or to KCI as being an example, the new terminal that accommodates, but also South of the Sodan, Panasonic. The news of Panasonic kind of broke as we were in this process. We started to hear a lot of interest, folks here, companies here, support that down there also. One thing we did hear quite a bit of is that largely there was a preference to improve local roads versus building brand-new routes on new alignments going through, going through the county itself. We asked the stakeholders, if you were to put a vote, what do you think is important to you? And we could talk about sustainability is an issue. We could talk about equity or access to jobs. If a transportation project actually will make it easier for people to get to work in different parts of the community, that being that academic kind of access to jobs. Economic impact, is it a project that's going to open up land for commercial industrial development that's going to generate jobs here? Mobility, the ability to have different options to go around, congestion causing some of those issues, and most of those congestion comments came up about Route 7, K7 there, and then safety. You started to see what they valued as most important economic impact being the top, equity and congestion kind of being right behind that, and safety not far as well. We had a couple of public meetings in early November. We had about 70 people attend those meetings, and we heard some of those same common themes, the access to Panasonic and the soda out there. We had big maps out there of the county, people were writing down and pointing out where are some of those locations they're seeing, maybe a safety issue, maybe there's a curve that they're worried about, or that shoulders don't exist here and it's really dangerous issue. So we started to see some of those conditions. That desirable, that desire for bicycle routes and trails, people started to talk about that. There was also a very strong desire we heard from the public for visibility in our process, that they'd be able to see how things came through, and it wouldn't just be the loudest voice in the room is getting their project moving forward, not taking everything into account. So if you go through this process, is it something that we can understand? And then one of the things that was interesting, one of the projects talked about was the Patriot Highway, so many of you may remember that proposal, I didn't know there several years ago. There was very little support for that. In fact, we're surprised about the disfavor for that when they came out pretty strongly. That was one of those projects that was largely built on new alignment. So it was one of those things going through, it was current lots, current areas, and honestly, a lot of it was going through a flip lane and which it wouldn't be very easy to build a roadie also. We asked them their importance on priorities, economic impact at the public meetings also ranked number one, with mobility, congestion, and safety all close together, right in those categories. Knowing not everybody likes to go to public meetings, we had an online meeting as well where people could do, see everything that was presented there. We had 55 people actually zoom in and provide comments on different projects, more than that actually kind of weighed in on some of the priorities. And some of the themes we heard from the public, there was some support for some sort of, I don't know, some sort of connection that would go from north part of the city down, or north part of the county, down towards Tonga Noxie perhaps, and on down south towards DeSoto. There were some spot safety concerns that were identified. And they're just, also it was interesting, there was little support for expansion projects that had been talked about in the past, like a new alignment of 2440 coming out of Tonga Noxie and heading west. Wasn't that they're, they were necessarily against it, they just didn't, didn't have a lot of support for it as we look from that. And again, we heard that desire for bicycle accommodations. Online, we saw a little bit different priorities. We actually saw safety come number one, is that top priority out there. And then mobility and economic impact not far behind that. At the meetings, and this was hosted online, we had a map that showed all those 20-plus years worth of projects that have been identified. So we started to understand what they were. And what you see, there's a lot of projects that kind of overlap each other, some that are some close to each, close to each other, you want to build one and the other. And we really wanted to take the feedback we heard from the community, we met with a lot of the staff from the communities as well to develop what became a consolidated project map with 43 separate projects identified. Now, some of those projects could be combined ultimately. For instance, we identified, there are several interchanges along K7 that could be combined as one mega project. We evaluated it then kind of independently on this one. And there are other projects that could be, could be broken up and divided and built in smaller pieces. Total project, total cost for all this was about $1.5 billion, and projects there range anywhere from less than about half a million dollars, up to the largest project being over $350 million. And we can go through, if you guys want to look at this map, we can talk it through. This will again be available so you can dig in and see a lot of the particulars of these projects as well. One of the ways we actually evaluate projects is what we call travel sheds. And think of it this way of where can you get in 10 or 20 or 30 minutes? And the example we're showing here is in Lansing, someone that's the center of the county here. And you can see kind of how easy it is to get to those different locations. And you layer that then with a new project. So as an example, the Eastern Gateway, this is that new connection over to Route 152. And you start to see that if you compare today with that project, you have more access to jobs within 30 minutes, more access to population that may come do business here, more key destinations, education centers, community centers, parks and grocery stores, medical facilities, and we can quantify those, which is important. So a lot of the evaluations that we're going through today are all quantifiable. So it's not subject to speculation or anything else, it's things we can actually measure and evaluate projects in that way. There are a lot of different evaluation metrics we looked at as we went through those. We'll kind of hit on these, but generally they range from traffic operations or delay, if you will, how long it's take to get places, safety, access to amenities and population, equity, sustainability and resiliency, and then some other factors that are important out there. We'll hit on the other factors in a little bit, but we're expanding this list based on some feedback and some things we want to be sure you're aware of. One of those factors is the number of partners involved. So if you have a project that crosses different governmental boundaries, if you've got more support between the project, it scores higher in a lot of processes. And the other element is project, what we call project readiness, and that goes to a little bit of environmental clearance here. This becomes extremely critical when we think of some of the mega grants out there for federal projects, these federal competitive, national competitive programs that might generate 100 or $200 million towards a project. There's a lot of strings attached with that. One of those is the project has to be ready and we're confident the project could be built relatively soon. I'd like to say that the federal government in those situations, and this is money controlled by the administration, that they're confident that they can come in and say, we brought that last dollar to the table, and we know the project's going to get built pretty soon. So when you think about environmental clearances through NEPA, you pretty much have to have that done. Your project pretty much has to be pretty far in design. You probably got to have right-of-way in hand or almost in hand to build the project. So they know there's nothing that's going to be a snag to say, the Secretary of Transportation awarded a project to this community, but oh wait, it couldn't actually be built. So they want to have that confidence, a little more than KDOT is willing to develop that project with you. Likewise, Mid-America Regional Council is willing to have a little bit more patience behind it. So the bigger the pot of money, the less patience and less risk they want to take in awarding those dollars. So the tool, I recognize you can't see this up here, you'll be able to see it in a little more detail and probably look a little bit different when you move forward. But what we actually do is we're able to step through and you're able to look at a few different things. One, we can break out the categories of projects. So say you only, you're looking at KDOT funding for major projects, major roadway improvements or new interchanges, you can select those type of projects to look for funding and see how they might evaluate and score out. Or if it's safety funds, you can look at those. Or if it's multimodal projects, bicycle amenities, sidewalk amenities, transit projects, service, you can focus in on those. You can also look in, and this is where you start to provide your values. What is important to you if you think about traffic operations, if you think about safety, access to jobs, what's the most important categories? How do you want to rank those? That ranking actually is used to calculate the score of the projects. So the facts behind the projects we're able to calculate aren't really the question. It's your priorities and your values that'll help define what that is. So if economic development is your top priority, you'll see a different project rise up to the top of the list. If you're somebody who says, you know, safety at all costs, I want to give 50% of the weighting to a safety score, you'll see a different project at the top of the list. And we'll provide guidance for those different funding pots as well, what they value. So you can understand again, how your values versus how the other pots of money, they value projects, and you can understand how you would be competitive in those categories. Just because you're in love with a project, it might not meet the categories that the Mid-America Regional Council, well, KDOT finds is important, and ultimately they're the ones who are picking, so that becomes the criteria you need to understand. So we'll step through a little bit here on what we're looking at. One is traffic operations and user delays. We're actually looking out into the future, out to year 2050 with the projected growths that we anticipate. And as you look at a project, as it's created and end of change, what's the change in traffic volume, what's the change in congestion? And we can calculate and estimate that. And what's that reduction in delay out there? What's the benefit to drivers for those projects? Those values are then normalized and scored so that you can evaluate the projects against each other for what has the better, a better traffic operations benefit than other projects. When we talk about access to opportunity, economic development or freight movement, we start to look at, what does it mean when you build those travel sheds? What's it mean for access to population? What's it mean for jobs, for key destinations? And we can quantify those elements as we look at this process. And we go through, and one of the other categories we look at is, are you close to a school or a parkson recreation location? Those are kind of yes or not, yes or no, you're within a quarter mile of that? That's a criteria the federal government looks at in some things. With those, we're actually able to group them scores. We broke this up into two different categories. One is that population amenities score, the other is the economic development. Population amenities is the lighter tan color here, if you will, the access to population and the destinations and those quality of life elements. So how does it rank that way? And then how do you look at economic development? Access to jobs, how you're opening up land now that is planned for to be commercial or industrial in the future? Are you providing better access to those properties? And how many acres is that happening? And then what's happening within proximity to an interstate for freight reliability? So if you're talking about things that are producing items, the ability to get to the interstate system is important, and then what is that impact? Equity is, this is a federal-defined program, there are three different categories we look at, areas of persistent poverty, historically disadvantaged communities, and opportunity zones. Kind of a yes or no, does your project have an influence on those areas? We can score that. Those are federally defined. They, they tell us which zones and which tracks fall into those categories. The only ones that do are here in the City of Leavenworth and the county. We're able to use that to kind of build that equity score as you move forward. Sustainability, resiliency, a couple of different categories we look at, changes in what we call vehicle miles travel. So is it a project that's going to reduce the amount of miles people are driving out there, which means a reduction in emissions, a reduction in greenhouse gases, things of that nature? And you can start to see some of those categories. Some projects actually improve things, other things actually make it a little worse. We also want to look at, from the resiliency standpoint, things like your bridge conditions. If we know it's a project that's going to replace a bridge that has a limited life already, that's important to maintain that infrastructure as you look forward there. Or are we going to eliminate a low-water crossing? Or are we going to take a gravel road and turn it into a paved road? Those are factors that are looked through that resiliency lens to come up with a score in that area. And then is it a location in which you're filling out like gaps in sidewalks or bike facilities? Maybe you've got a sidewalk that goes for four blocks, you've got a project that's a couple of blocks long, and then there's a sidewalk on the other one, it's going to fill that gap of that sidewalk in there. We can start to understand and score those as well. And that brings us to that sustainability score as we evaluate it. Safety is an important one. We actually looked at six years worth of crash data that occurred in the county to understand where they're locating. We've also done a lot of research as a nation to understand if we make certain improvements, we can anticipate a certain reduction in crashes. So if we add a shoulder to a road, if we put in those rumble strips, if we convert a dangerous stop-controlled intersection to a roundabout, those factors, we can estimate reductions in crashes as well as reductions in fatalities, which is why we score the heaviest and weigh the heaviest when we look at that. And that gives us that safety score to understand what does this project mean? How's it going to improve safety as we look forward? And then those other categories, we touched on before, a number of jurisdictions and the environmental clearance. Here, what we've done is provide an estimate of what environmental clearance those projects might require. And that really comes down to three different categories. One is called a categorical exclusion or a CE. That's kind of a simple permit process to get signed off on. It's a minor intersection improvement, it's nothing too complicated. We can handle that easily through a permit process. The next level is what we call an environmental assessment or an EA. These can take a year, give or take, to actually go through that process. It's one which has a larger environmental impact. We need to understand that, document it better before the federal highway department actually signs off on that. Those are going to be your major projects that are out there by and large. The last category is that environmental impact statement for EIS. Probably all heard that term throwed around at some point. These are often multi-year, multimillion-dollar studies to get those projects through that process. And I say that so those tend to be projects with like the major river crossings, when you think about that. So just to recognize, if you think of that project readiness we talked about earlier, that, oh, you might have a project that's great, if it's going to take that EIS, you're still years before you're ready to actually apply for that project. And that gets us to the scoring here. And again, this is a little blow up in the table we looked at before. Where you can start to have those influences and start to weigh in is the weighting you see in this, in this yellow table. And this is something you're going to be, so we get our tool online for you, and we can get feedback from everybody, you'll be able to dig in and see what happens. If you change how you weight projects, what's important to you? This is an example where economic development was at 35%, safety at 25, and traffic operations at 15. This is one listing of the projects that you might see come up. You change those categories, or maybe economic development is quite as important, but traffic operations become more, and you start to see a shift in priorities of projects and how they would score out. So what have we heard so far? We've had a lot of conversations with folks and had one earlier today, as a matter of fact, down at the library. We heard there's that desire that we, to look at combine, combining some projects as well as looking at them individually, adding that functionality as well. Also recognizing there might be some projects we want to divide into smaller pieces. The 158th or 20th Street corridor is largely going to be municipally controlled, that's a project that would actually extend from 20th Street all the way down to a new interchange with I-70, and then a new crossing of the Kansas River to line up with Kill Creek and an interchange at K-10. It's a project that provides a north-south local alternative to K7. You probably aren't going to build that all at once. It's going to be in small pieces as you build it, so recognizing that, how you can move forward. We've asked, and we've got some ideas, we're going to show you a valuation of cost effectiveness. So if we take what we can measure, and we compare that to the cost of the project to understand some of that delta. We heard just earlier, actually last night, I didn't make up on this slide, the desire to say, hey, let's not forget when we talk about cost, talk about the shares we might get from the federal government, what's that local match going to be as well? So you can understand typically on projects that if it's a million-dollar project, you're going for funding in which somebody might come up with 80% that still leaves you $200,000 locally. So you understand from your budget standpoint what that means. More, more important, those mega federal projects, I do want to caveat, those are projects in which typically, while the law states they can provide up to 80 or 90% of a match, the reality is they bring about 30 to 50% of the project cost. So you understand, if you're talking about a $300 million project, we've got 150 million, we might be able to count them for the federal government, we got to find $150 million elsewhere. Put that as a context there. We've talked about that additional information with resiliency, we're starting to factor some of those things in on gravel roads and low-water crossings. The other factor brought up was economic impact and talking about new interchanges and what we, when we're looking and evaluating economic impact, we looked at your comp plans and your zoning that were out there today, what was your vision for where those occurred? Well, if a new interchange is coming in, we'd anticipate we'd start to see more economic activity. activity around there regardless of that. So we'll document some of those as well. And then lastly, we, when we're looking at our freight access, we focus on access to I-70 because that is the designated freight route. People brought up, well, let's not forget 435 as well, so we're adding that factor So we talked about a lot of things, we'll show you a couple of different examples of what could play out here. What we did is took the model we had, and we looked at what we heard from the stakeholders of priorities, what we heard from the public, and then kind of an aggregate between the two, and you can see how some of the projects might change in their priorities move up or down. But one thing you will notice though is, in general, you'll see groupings of projects all stay somewhat together. So the top one to three projects, depending on how you look at it, often are kind of going to be in that top one to three. Now, you can, you can play with the tool, it's fairly flexible, you can put all your weighting on one category, and you'll find a very different result, but it gives you that idea that quite often you'll see projects when you go through this process, the projects near the top always somewhat remain at the top. And I encourage you to think of that as you look at those, that it's a groupings of projects for you to think about, not number one versus two. It's here are the top three or five projects we want to focus on. So one draft, this came out of the public scenarios. Looking at that, and it was a little bit tough to see here, where we rated and economic development was 25% basically the scoring, traffic operations, safety 20%. And how did that rank out? In this instance, what we saw was the new interchange with I-70 at 158th Street, which was that first leg of that connections providing that new route, that actually scored the highest. But it wasn't far above K-5 in approving that facility over to 435. If you look at the stakeholder priorities, it had a higher emphasis on economic development. And in that case, K-5 actually rose, rose to the top, and 158th kind of slid down. So you'll see there's some variations. And then combining those, they start to shift one more time. So as we bring this forward to you, we'll show you again some of these patterns we've seen based on the weighting we heard from folks. You'll have the flexibility to test it as well. And we'll also show you what those funding sources and how they prioritize to help you make informed decisions moving forward. Ultimately here, that goal is later this fall, KDOT is going to come out with their next round of local consult projects, where they come out and ask the communities, what projects do you want us to consider? My goal and hope is that the communities here in Leavenworth County can rally behind a few projects and say, these are our priorities, we really want you to focus on that, in all candor. Some of your neighboring regions, Johnson County, Kansas, Sucher County, Wichita, Kansas, Manhattan, they do much better. Southeast Kansas, a number of counties rallying together, they do much better actively supporting each other on a few key projects. They are much more successful getting those projects. That's our goal here, is to think about what we can actually prioritize and focus in so that you can start getting some of those fundings from KDOT, from Mark, and even hopefully the federal government directly some days for projects.
So you said to interrupt. So why is that the case, that some of these other outlier cities work better with each other?
I think there's, they've just taken the time to build those, and they've, it's, I don't know if I get to say why they did it, I think it's just-
Or best guess.
They've had some folks, be it on the staff or elected officials, that have really pulled them together in that leadership. If you look at Johnson County, Kansas, for instance, Commissioner Ed Eiler was there for a long time, and he, he was a pretty strong voice and got a lot of people together. So I think it's a factor of just communities recognizing they need to work together and do that. And they're successful that way. It's, it's largely political leadership, but sometimes it is some strong administrative leaderships that can pull that together here. I think you're taking those next steps right here through this process.
Thank you.
Stronger together.
So our next steps is, we're going to wrap up a lot of engagement actually this week. We're going to take some of this information so that you can see this and dig into more detail as well as the public, to provide some input, so that our goal is sometime roughly in the month of May, that we'll have a draft report that kind of brings all this together for you. And we'll be back in front of you for another briefing in like May or early June, seeing how your schedules work out. That's our target. We don't want to rush this too much, we want to make sure everybody is, understands the process of it moves from June to July. I'm comfortable with that, I think the goal is thinking again about those local consult meetings with KDOT as that next opportunity. Then that'll be followed next spring by Mid-America Regional Council's call for projects for funding, and if you can speak together on those aspects, it's going to be strong. The federal government actually issues yearly call for projects. With that, happy to take any more questions, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you for the presentation.
I have a question. How could, could the priorities shift after Panasonic comes in?
So we did take Panasonic into account as we're looking at in the future of 2050. That came about, we looked at Mark's model, the regional model didn't account for any of that important zone, we actually had them modify that to bring that into account. But good question. That was certainly a change from last summer when we started.
Yeah, I want to have something set in stone, and then all of a sudden Panasonic comes in, and all of a sudden you need a direct route to DeSoto to be thinking about too, because you know DeSoto doesn't have enough housing to support that, it's going to have to be all around the area.
And you know what, that's one thing to keep in mind, is these are, these are projects, things like that, it always takes revisiting, these types of every, I'd say yearly or anything like that, but every few years, you've got to go back and say, what's changed? Because there are a lot of things that are going to occur, we never find.
Any other questions?
No, great presentation, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time, sir, appreciate you.
I'm looking forward to digging, digging into this more.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, semi-annual report from conventions and visitors bureau.
We have Kristi Lee here for this item tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Good to be here again. Okay, hopefully the packet was, the information was in your packet, so we'll go ahead and get started. Some of the discussion points tonight that I'll be covering is, like I usually do, the national travel industry, some Kansas State information, and then followed up by an update on Leavenworth information. So nationally, travel forecast, they're still saying inflation obviously is hitting everyone's bottom line. Just heard today that gas is probably going to go up over the summer, so that may impact travel, yet to be seen and that. But 59% are expecting to still plan travel within the U.S. versus overseas for the time being. Days of rest and relaxation, they're claiming are over, everyone really wants to travel like a local and do some local experiencing and that. So we'll see how that pans out, but they're saying almost 90% want to really experience the destinations that they're visiting, so. The vaccine mandate is still intact for overseas travel to the states, so hopefully in May that'll drop off in international travel. It doesn't affect us so much here in Leavenworth versus the Fort, I guess it, it does affect that some, but internationally for the rest of the country, it does affect the inbound travel. Job openings, just had the GM Director of Sales meeting with the hoteliers today, and jobs, everyone's still somewhat having a hard time with keeping employees and finding employees and that. So as you can tell here, it's, it's still a big deal, the lodging and hospitality job openings account for 1.5 million of the 11, you know, of the 5.7 million unemployed. It's, it's a large number that the hoteliers are still struggling with, so. Just as long, everybody else is struggling with it too, so. Some of the Kansas tourism, this is just the visitor spending sectors in 2021. Lodging, 9 million, food and beverage, 22 million, retail, 10 million, or almost 11 million, recreation, almost 10 million, transportation, 25 million, for a total of about 77 million economic impact for tourism in Kansas in 2021. The growth rate is obviously pretty good, at almost 24%. So then the next slide shows a total visitor spending year by year from 2017 until 2021. Hopefully by the fall, my fall report, I'll have a '22 report, but for now, it still just goes through 2021. And you can see the total amount since 2017, and it, you know, it does show that it is increasing. Obviously, 2020 had a little bit of downgrade there, but it bounced right back in 2021. So then on into Leavenworth stats. This, this information is gathered by our Datafy program that we have purchased a couple years ago now, and it's, this is from visitors 50 miles and out. So visitor days by length is, 32% are taking day trips, so that's actually pretty good. Your top point of interest, as you can see, the Leavenworth National Cemetery and the Chapel of the Veterans, which basically tells us that the VA hospital out there does bring in a lot of tourism or people from 50 miles out to go to the VA hospital. Leavenworth Landing showed up, the Bowling Center, Great Life, Haymarket Square, and the County Courthouse. And then along the bottom, it gives us the demographics, age, income, household, there's just a lot of good information that you can glean from these reports. Next one, the unique visitors for 2022, 192,927 visitors. Total trips is 448,000. Basically, those unique visitors visited more than once. That's what that number is right there. So average length of stay is 2.9 for 2022. And just kind of follow it down, your in-state visitors, 27% versus the 72% out of state, so visitor days are good. Share of trips by the states, our, our states surrounding us and that, you can kind of see where everyone's coming from. And then over on the right-hand side are the top cities that are visiting Leavenworth. Manhattan shows up, that's again probably coming through the Fort, Fort Riley and that, but some other visitors as well. And then on into our occupancy, occupancy is, in 2022 is at 60%. Hopefully, we can go, get back up to the 2019 levels. Our supply rose a little bit, you know, due to the fact of the Leavenworth local coming online. However, what happened, so Leavenworth local doesn't report to the Smith Travel Research, where I get this information from, so I inserted the Econolodge with their rooms just to kind of get that supply up to where it would possibly be if Leavenworth local was reporting to this.
So what's the supply number exactly?
That's how many room nights there are in Leavenworth.
Got you, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You bet, yes. ADR is your average daily rate. Rev par, I don't know why it keeps dropping that R. Hopefully, I'll get that fixed. But anyway, rev par is revenue per available room. And then revenue for the last few years, and then approximately 15% of room nights sold in 2022 were TGT exempt, which is down, and I think that's still tracking. I know when I first started doing this a few years ago, it was right around 30%. So I think the federal government is, is not direct paying so much anymore, and they're giving everybody those credit cards and that, which they are taxed on, so. Local transient guest tax collected down there, and about 74,861 room nights for 2022. Some other Leavenworth updates from the office, visitor guidebooks, hopefully you've all seen them. If not, let me know, and I can get you some and that. But we've distributed around 6,500 or so now. Travel centers, local delivery hotels, et cetera, 40 direct inquiries so far, 86 welcome bags, and around 3,100 mailed to visitor centers around the state, plus all of our local deliveries, et cetera. So we do have plans in July to really canvas the whole town again and get more out there. And then we're doing that on a daily basis, and Jennifer Wall, she's going out and visiting with local businesses and that. If they need more, obviously we'll deliver them that day, so getting them out there. Print advertising, print ad, eight print ads placed so far, distribution of 457,000. Online advertising, continuing to do the six banner ads with the State Office of Tourism, a search engine marketing campaign through Madden Media this year, we're going to do a native ad campaign in the fall with them. E-newsletter, our open rate is at 27%, which is pretty good. I think the average is around 15 or something like that, so we're above average on our open rate, which is great. Continue to post on our four major social media outlets, Facebook, Twitter, Pinterest, and Instagram. Website stats, page views versus unique views there. Our top referral still continues to be Travel Kansas, which I attribute to our banner ads that we have running with Travel Kansas, so that is a very good site for us to get referrals and traffic from. And then just kind of broke it down a little bit for you, just to kind of show you, we hosted 16 group tours last year and three meetings for a total of about 845 people when you add it all up. And attendance, we have a format that, direct spend that we accounted directly to those 845 people were about 77,330. And then if you take it times what the state says is what an overnight person spends versus a day person spends, and you break that out, we had about 245 of those 845 people that stayed overnight, or 245, anyway, overnights. And then day trips, 600 people, and so that just kind of gives you an idea of, of the spend.
Kristi, can you talk just briefly about the process for getting a meeting? It was interesting, they schedule so far out, and you have to get in front of these groups, and for a while, we didn't have hotels, so it's like, I felt like right as we were getting our foot in the door with a lot of associations and groups, then we sort of ran into 2019 and 2020, but can you talk to us a little bit about that?
Yes, sure. It's still a struggle, so to speak, because, I mean, as everyone's aware, when you do attend a meeting and that, so a lot of corporate, probably, we're having a harder sell with that, just because a lot of corporate people do want it all in one location. So they are looking for your hotels that have full service, and that with the hotel, you know, with your restaurants, with your bar, with your meeting rooms and everything all in one place. So, but what we do is, I've placed several ads in meeting magazines, either in Kansas or regionally, attend a couple of conferences, we do a small market meetings conference to try and get leads on different conferences and a lot of reunions that are looking for places, unique places to go, so present our city to them via a profile sheet. Most of the conferences, when you attend on that level, you get like a six-minute presentation in front of a, either a meeting planner or a tour operator or that, and you show them what Leavenworth has to offer. And then hopefully, get, they will, they'll ask you questions, whatever, you come back here, and then we, again, call them and just continue that conversation a little bit. So it's, it's a constant trying to get in front of these people and present Leavenworth as, as an option for them to travel or to bring their meeting to. So, for example, there's probably a, say, 100 meeting planners at any one of these conferences, and there's 300 to 400 suppliers that are there that are presenting their cities as well. So it's a constant marketing tool that you have to get in front of these people to continue trying to sell our city to them, so. Does that kind of help?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
More local updates, the Sprint grants, I think those came out, hopefully everyone kind of seen they were along with some other grants that the state was offering and that. So a couple of our local museums applied, so we presented them with the support letters, of course, and everything, so hopefully they'll hear back, and it'll be positive news for them, that would be amazing. The CVB has started a new stakeholder e-newsletter and that, so if you would like to receive that, it's going out the first of every month and that. A lot of, it's basically what we try and do, we're condensing the information that I gave you tonight, along with some other things that we're doing and stuff. So if you'd like to sign up for that newsletter, just let me know, and we'll get, get you signed up. Something fun, we did some stickers in the office, and I was going to bring some tonight, and then I forgot them. But anyway, if you want us stickers, stop by the office, and we'll give you a sticker. But anyway, if you want us stickers, stop by the office, and we'll give you a sticker. Our visitor's guidebook up there on the right hand, top of the right side there with a great picture, I love that picture. Anyway, and then excited to let you know, if you haven't heard, Wagga Wagga is our sister city in Wagga Wagga. Australia is visiting this year, August 22nd through the 27th. The sister city committee meets on Aug, or April 18th to kind of start planning and that, so stay tuned. Hopefully, we'll, we'll obviously have the reception that we usually have with our title holders and that, so, and a whole week planned for them, so it'll be fun. Also, our Omihachman Japan people are visiting this year, either a Saturday or Sunday in July, most likely July 16th and that for the day, so excited to be hosting them as well. It's a different group that's normally here, it's students that are going to the Voorhees School over there. They're probably middle, middle grade, some, I don't know, anywhere between probably 12 and 14 years old, so I think they're expecting about 20 students, so that'll be kind of fun.
That'll be fun.
Yeah, it will. Oops, wrong way. And then just some updates, our transient guest tax grants are catching on. February round, this past, we had an ask of almost 43,000 requests with only 16,000 or 15,000 to hand out. It's, it's getting tougher and tougher to make those decisions and that, but we still funded seven organizations this round, and then August 1st, we'll see what happens on August 1st and that. But really happy, and, and the people that do receive these grants are, are very happy for the support as well. So some of our group tours down there that we have scheduled coming up, trades, trade shows and conferences that I'll be tending through the end of the year. And then as always, if you're looking at any events or want to know what's going on in the area, please take a look at our calendar of events online on our website, visit leavenworthks.com. We really try and do a, a good job of including a lot of the area events on there, so. Any questions, stop into the office, give us a call, or email us, or, or anything else, so. Anyone have any questions on the report, or?
Just looking at the calendar event, what's the Leavenworth Got Talent?
Leavenworth's Got Talent?
Yes, ma'am.
When is it?
Yeah, what is, like, who, which organization sponsored that?
Um, I would have to go look.
Okay, okay.
Because I'm not sure who's, who's sponsoring that one, I would have to actually look online. I mean, we, we put a bunch on there, so it's hard to remember.
No, I got you, I understand.
Who's putting which ones on, but yes, it's, check it out, and I'm sure it'll be on there. Yes.
A great presentation, thank you. Opening up to the commission, do you know anyone got any questions or comments?
Great, great report.
Oh, thank you.
You got a question?
Oh, just, just real quick, so when folks are staying overnight, they're spending 37% more with us. So has there been any thought given to, we were kind of talking about some of this in the goal setting the other day, but, you know, other events or anything like that to try to get rolling here, you know, to, to see if we can get some more overnight visitors or anything like that, just asking.
Yeah, we're always working on that. I know, met with the design committee, the Main Street Design Committee just the other day, and trying to brainstorm on what we can do, and in fact, Jordan with Hampton wanted to know the same thing, are there any events coming up that are going to create some overnights and that? Currently, we really don't have any overnight events that are going to create that, but I would love to see some. Actually, the gravel grinder, which is coming up, creates quite a few overnights, so I forgot about that one, but yes, the gravel grinder is a great event that does create overnight stays, so I guess that's the next one, the closest one. So more gravel grinders. All right, thanks.
Thank you so much, Kristi. Last item on your agenda, fire station three, WPC administration structures.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, two weeks ago, at a study session, we hosted two firms, the, these two firms were selected from five who responded and were reviewed by staff and determined to be firms that could complete the task of building fire station number three in the wastewater admin building. They presented in front of the commission. Subsequently, we provided the original RFQ information to the commission, and it's before you tonight. What staff is looking for is a consensus on a single firm to move forward with. That would involve negotiating scope of services and a fee. If that's successful, then the step after that would be to bring that in front of you for approval. If it's not, then we would return to you for further information. But it's before the governing body tonight to provide staff consensus on one of the two firms who presented two weeks ago.
Well, I definitely want to say both firms did a great job with their presentation, and then just knowing the, the history, are very pleased with some of the past projects that's been done in our community, I'm in favor of going with Cause Construction.
I have this one.
Me too.
So I'm just curious, because I, I definitely wrote a few notes down as far as evaluation goes and everything like that. Paul, what was, just earlier, we're looking at the, on the evaluation data that was out there about the transportation study and stuff like that, what was the process with evaluating all five?
Firms?
Firms.
Yeah, let me pull up. So what staff, the process that staff under, undertook was, we used a scoring matrix that we often use and KDOT uses, and I didn't have it pulled up here, let me pull it up, So we used one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different criteria, all weighted. They, the first one, I don't know if you want me to go through them all, but I'm happy to. Qualifications of the design-build team, do those assigned to our project have the expertise in designing and constructing similar projects? Second one is experience in the design-build projects or similar function and scope? Are the members of the design-build team familiar with design-build, that specific approach, which is different to this project? And have they worked together before, looking for a team approach? Is the team lead defined? History and estimating accuracy, meeting projects, budgets, and deadlines? List of people available to provide the design and construction services, are they identified in the proposal? Availability for the project, do they provide a schedule that shows design, starting in construction, completion, and a timeframe that works for the city? The next one is our examples provided of similar projects that they have completed, including references. Seven is other relevant information. Eight is location of team members, do they have offices in the Kansas City area? Those all had a different weight. And then, once we did that, we brought the firms, we had visited some on-site, we know them, expertise from, we had a cross-section, we had myself, we had a public works director, citizen city manager, deputy director of public works, and the fire chief, all provide input, and then we, we selected two from that group and submitted them forward to the city commission.
And do we know, like, where, excuse me, sorry, Cause and Turner actually ranked overall? Do you guys rank them all?
So I don't have that in front of me as far as where, where they ranked on the criteria from the five, I couldn't tell you, everybody had different ratings. We had a general feeling where, where they ended up.
Did you have anybody that came in first, second, or third, or?
Oh, yeah, are these the top, are these the top two?
Yes, so, I will tell you that based on the scoring criteria, that Turner was the highest scoring of the responses that we had, and then we, and then we moved them in Cause forward.
Just Cause second?
Yeah, they were, they were the consensus. There was a lot of in-between there, and then we look for duplication of strengths and weaknesses, and it's somewhat a science, and then it's a little bit of an art as well.
And I'm just curious, the other fire stations that were done in the past, were they done by somebody totally different than these two?
I don't know who constructed Fire Station 1-2, those were before, those were constructed well before I started.
Well, my, you know, I did, I wrote down pros and cons on each one after we did our, after we had the meeting last time. I, I think, you know, having, and both of them, I felt were highly qualified. Either one of them would do a, a really good job. I did feel like having, that we would have more local employees if we had a local company. I know that Ed asked, what's their name, the Turner Group, about hiring local people if they were, if they were qualified, and they suggested they were qualified, but I know for a fact, I know for a fact that most of these companies have their own people, and they bring them in. I've seen that with the four, a lot, and I've seen it with other, other construction jobs we've had around here. My ex-husband was a construction bid estimator, so I, we saw that with this company as well. And, and I feel like having a company that has a vested interest in our community is important, and that, you know, they're, they're not going to just jump in and do the project and go off to the next project. They're right here, they're right here.
Was that, was that the only criteria you used on that, or what do you think on everything else?
No, I listened to their presentation, I mean, they gave us a lot of information, both of them did, and I'm sure it looked like to me that, that Turner had a lot of bells and whistles, which of course, because they're big, I mean, they're huge.
Yeah, they do a lot of national.
I mean, they had all these other offices and stuff. But economies of scale, they talked about that, but I think, you know, our own companies here can get economies of scale, so I don't think that is an issue. But, I mean, the two, to me, I felt like were equal, except that this one is local. This one is local, they have a vested interest in our community.
And they both have accomplished quite a bit of things, both companies, but yeah.
Exactly, yeah. Their projects were all good.
I, you know, listening to both of them, I felt like with Turner, the cost control measures they've got in place, the cost containment, the, the handle on the supply chain, going through kind of how they evaluate, how they, you know, put everything together, and, and how connected they are, and the strength and the country that they have, could, could benefit us greatly here from a, you know, project management standpoint. And, you know, one thing I, I wanted to, that was really burdened on my mind through the process was like, well, who stepped up to the plate? We had five companies, who stepped up to the plate to really try to partner alongside us through this process, or the rest of the team? But those are a few, a few pieces that, that stood out to me. I liked their open book concept, that, that model, that, that piece of it. But honestly, I would like to, if we were building a fire station, I'm sorry, a police station, I'd want to hear from Chief Kitchens, but we're building a fire station, so I'd like to hear from Chief Burge, if you want to provide any feedback on anything. We're about ready to decide a firm up here, and, and I think we'd be remiss if we didn't get your own thoughts.
Well, I wouldn't want to put them on the spot like that, yeah, and if, and honestly...
As long as you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to put them on the spot like that.
Yeah.
And I think, I think the decision is, yeah, it's up to the commission, and so...
And I do have some, I mean, with whichever one is chosen, of course, with city guidance and the firemen or Chief Burge would sit down and see what is needed for the fire department to make sure whatever building is built, it is for growth, of course, and how many bays they need and everything, is that correct? I mean, you just don't hire a firm and then just say, okay, I mean, you're going to have communication, see what's needed, right, for the fire department, for that building.
Public input, commission feedback, and staff feedback will be part of the design process.
Did anybody, did you even talk to the chief at all? I, I reached out to him to get some.
Yeah, I actually spoke with the chief, yeah.
I did too, yeah.
And feedback and thoughts, I mean, we don't have to put them on the spot, but...
Well, I'm in favor with Cause Construction, and that's my decision.
Yeah.
As much as I'm in favor always of hiring local as much as we can, we talk a lot about, you know, are we getting value? And we can't really tell what value we're going to get without knowing, how much is it going to cost?
Well, we only have limited budget.
Well, right, that's true, there's only so much we can spend.
That's the thing, but what are we going to get for that? What is the value of what we are going to get for the, for the money that we can afford to spend? You know, and there's, I mean, there, there's no way for them, there, there seems to be no way for them to tell us, you know, give us some idea of, here's what we're going to, here's what we're going to make for you, out of either one of them.
That's true, I asked a lot of questions, and I got more information out of Cause than I did out of the other one as far as the size and the, and the location on the, on the lots and that sort of thing.
And it's hard, because the cost, you know, it's just, you know, what's the going rate of certain materials at the time? We know they keep going up or some down, and then once they start, you know, you know, with that land that's there, you know, and make it unsettling, you know, what's going to happen underneath? I don't know, with that old stormwater and all that, you know? But the engineers, you know, that's, that's their job. So yeah, I think it's hard to really put a, you know, we know what we have, but it's a hard thing for any firm.
That's my point, it's hard.
Yeah, but...
You know, it's, it's very difficult to, to say, well, this one's going to do better than that one, because we don't know what either one of them's going to really do. I mean, we know what their expertise is, we know what their experience is.
I think that's what they're going based upon, though.
Right. And that there's communication between the city staff and fire department or chief of what is needed and, and what is needed to sustain growth. So, you know, you build something, you're like, okay, this is going to last a while in case we grow, and the more bays and everything, especially for that area off limit there is needed. That was my opinion.
So, I mean, I'll just ask, we need a consensus, are you in favor of Turner?
Well, I would like to, Commissioner Banner gave her thoughts on why, does anybody else want to share, because three of us here said Cause without, just right away, so...
Well, I literally said it, I said, very familiar with past projects that they've done, their investment in the community, knowing that they're capable.
No, I was just curious.
And that's, and that's what I said too, with what they've done local.
Turner came in first, so I wanted to know, like, why, why would, yeah, why did it come in first? What was it, what was it that we didn't see, I'm not going to say we, but, you know, I like Turner, but...
There wasn't, all, actually, all five firms are, were fully, this is not that complex of a project, I mean, just to be honest with you. All five firms could have ably and fully functionally completed this project, that we would not have put two firms in front of you that the entire staff didn't feel could accomplish the work within the budget that was stated, so.
Okay.
They did score higher on, but somebody has to score higher, usually, when you're using these criteria. And they did for, you know, a couple of different reasons, it wasn't a, a big, big span, and again, all five firms that submitted full RFQs were fully qualified to do the project.
I guess that's my question, though, is, is the biggest reason here, can you share anything else on why you would pick Cause or Turner?
I did that with my opening statement.
I know, and I agree with, I agree with Mayor Wilson, I could say the exact same thing.
That's what I'm saying, they, they're capable of doing it, they've done it, the relationship is there, so the experience, the expertise, the relationship, like, it's, and the presentation, I'm in favor of more so going with this company rather than Turner, so that's the third time I've made that statement.
No, just, Turner's got a lot more experience.
That's okay, but that's your opinion, yeah, that's, that's your opinion, that's okay.
Well, it's facts, I mean, of what they've done, you know.
But that's your opinion to go with Turner based upon the way they presented, that's the, that's what you received, and each one of us got different, you know, thoughts, so...
Commissioner, Banner?
I already said that I agreed with Mayor Wilson.
Yeah, so I...
And I, and I've seen both presentations, and that's the route I'm going with, the projects they have done, they're local, like they said, you know, they live here, they're vested in the city of Leavenworth.
Yeah, so that's...
They're aware of our infrastructure.
Right, of where, of what we need, since they are citizens here.
Floodplains and all that, they're...
Well, especially, yeah, that floodplain area, that, you know, they had the collapse on that limit years back, but yeah.
So I think we have the consensus, Paul, 3-2, Cause Construction.
And not that it matters, but I do agree with your assessment of Turner being number one, so...
That's it? That concludes the last item on your agenda, at this time, we're going to go around the table, start with Paul.
I do, I, I would have liked to have this on a regular meeting, but time is of the essence, there are three state issues that I need to inform the commission of, kind of let you know. I spent most of the day today either on phone or email with, I did, I did get really good response from all of our legislators. Three, and, and the reason why this is coming up now is, everything has to be finalized by Thursday, and then there is, they're gone for three weeks, and they come back April 27th through the 29th. There are, from one legislator, anecdotally, about 30 different tax ideas floating around, and members themselves that are not on the, the conference committee or the tax committee are waiting to see what comes out of these. So, three, three really important issues. Number one, still alive is the exemption or the elimination of local sales tax on groceries. I think everybody's seen that the state was stair stepping down, the state's 6.5% sales tax on groceries, and never was there discussion about the local sales tax on groceries. It actually went through the House Committee and died in committee. So, when it died in committee, you wouldn't think then that it would, it would revive later. It has revived, and I've heard that there is a lot of support for it on the Senate side. So, we'll see where that goes. Just to give you some rough data, if there was the elimination of sales tax, local sales tax on groceries, we are looking anywhere between one and $1.5 million. Three of our five largest sales tax producing entities in the city of Leavenworth are either completely grocery or at least half grocery. Walmart, Dylan's and Price Chopper. That amount of money, plus you throw in whatever Dollar Tree, Dollar General, Family Dollar food items would also qualify, that's somewhere between four and six mils. I did get favorable response from a lot of our local legislators that they are not in favor of that, but they are, again, waiting to see what happens in these conference committees. These are the negotiation teams. I think a lot of cities like ours who have tried to, we're only 20% property taxes and we are 40% sales tax. The downside of that is, if a large portion of that sales tax revenue stream is taken off the books, where does, where does that delta come from? And so, we're tracking that. I've indicated to all the, our legislators, with almost no warning, we are potentially facing this.
Does that include restaurants or not?
I don't believe so, but again, these rules are being written and rewritten as they go. So, that, that's our concern at this point. The next one is a government competition bill. If you've been around for a while, this is commonly referred to as the Genesis Bill for years. The owner of Genesis Health Clubs has been working around the state to try to make those health clubs tax exempt. The argument there that they compete against city funded or YMCA city partnership gyms, not the case here. We have a community center, but it certainly doesn't compete with Genesis. But that was expanded this year to any business that could potentially be in competition with a public entity. For us, where that could come into play is Planters Two. It's 105 unit rental facility for elderly and disabled, but it is rental property. So, does that mean it competes against Stonely Court and Penn Oaks and every other rental property in town where they could argue that they're competing against a government funded entity and that they should be tax exempt? My understanding on that is that it has been narrowed with something of a grandfather clause that any existing structures or businesses or properties owned by a government wouldn't be able to be a trigger point for the argument for a private tax exemption, but if you were to build something new. So, I just wanted to put that on your radar. The unintended consequences is what you worry about there. If they don't make those changes, if it's not narrowly focused, what would we be looking at as far as erosion of tax base? And then, where would that tax base shift? So, we're, we're tracking that one as well. And then, finally, House Bill 2306. My first exposure to this was, it started off as a property tax exemption for disabled veterans. And we started at percentages of disability. If anybody who's familiar with this, there's, the percentages assigned, you know, you can be 10%, 20%, 30%. And so, the original bill that, that I was following stair stepped it down as far as if you're, for example, if you're 80% disabled, you would maybe get a 60% property tax abatement. And this is all property taxes, 70% and it would go all the way down. The latest version and most current version of the bill is that there would be a full property tax exemption for any veteran, disabled or otherwise, over the age of 65. So, if you're over the age of 65 and you're a veteran, regardless of disability status, it would be a full abatement of all property taxes.
Not regardless of disability?
Yes.
Have to have a disability?
Or income? No.
So, no, not anymore. Not on the current bill.
Don't have to have, they're just retired veterans?
Yes.
Really?
Of, of, over the age of 65.
That's what I meant by retired.
And so, our concern here is, census data indicates there's 5,049 veterans in the city of Leavenworth.
Meaning?
5,049. So, 13% of our population, this is, this is napkin math, because it's hard to really dial down, but if you use, 13% of our population is over 65. If you took an average house value of $250,000 and did the math out, it's $279,000, which is one mil. So, our concern is just the accumulation of decreasing revenue streams, both on the sales tax and property tax side. Certainly not trying to do anything that would dissuade veterans from making Leavenworth their home. I don't know what the answer is. I'm not even saying that we're opposed to this bill. I just wanted to make the commission aware that it's out there and that we're tracking it. I've not indicated anything to our legislators, committing the commission, that we are against anything. I just indicated, I wanted to indicate to you what the impact, if those pieces of legislation went through, as I just indicated. So, I guess what I'm looking for, if anything, is any comments or any direction you'd like to give. I did, I did get really good feedback from Representative Proctor, Johnson and Bueller, and also Senator Pittman. A lot of it from them is, we're not sure where it's going to land. This is happening in these conference committees. It's kind of happening at the last minute. Stuff is being tacked on. And so, I think we've done a good job expressing what it would, the impact would be to Leavenworth, but that's as far as we've gone at this point.
And I don't think the rest of the state, this passed the House, one vote descending. Oh, was the rest up for it? And so, it's in the Senate now, but it's, or conference committee, I don't know which. Anyway, it, it doesn't affect most of the state that much as it would us and Manhattan, Kansas City.
Because we have the full, the full.
Because we have a lot of veterans here.
I will say, as far as, excuse me, I'm sorry, messaging to, to our local representatives and, you know, state representatives and everything, I know we talked about this a little bit before in the past, but we're having to contend with things right now that are systemic of a different issue. Until, until the way everything is evaluated gets addressed at the state level, we're going to keep having issues like this. And I know we all know that, we talked about it, but talked about a constitutional amendment to change the way property taxes are evaluated and to get away from the way it's been done in the past. I don't know what everybody else thinks about that, but I know there's a lot of people in favor of looking at that. Last I heard was that there was no desire from the state to really do that, at least not this year. Has that changed?
So, probably over the last 30 days, I think, as they came back and did town halls and evaluation notices went out, I have seen a little bit of movement at a 3% cap is the number that's been thrown out there. Usually, that doesn't happen the same year that it is talked about, but, but for the first time, it has been talked about, and I think it'll be a discussion. I did want to make one more other point that Representative Proctor let me know. There is a companion to the veteran tax exemption bill to reinstate the LAVTR, which is the local ad valorem tax. There haven't been, now, that doesn't mean they're coupled together. They could be split apart, you know, that one could go down, one, one could survive. We also don't know for sure right now what that number would look like. I asked if, if an evaluation would be done to gauge the impact on a specific community. So, say for instance, we're, we're much more disproportionately affected than another city, grab a city, Hutchison. Would they take that into account? And the answer was no, it would just be the LAVTR enacted by the state statute that's in effect now. So, I don't know how that would fall, fall as far as an offset, but there was consideration of attempting to do something with that to kind of maybe offset those losses. But again, that could be stripped out. It's, you know, perilous, that relationship.
Or how much is it going to be to, to, you know, recoup that money for us?
Right.
If the LAVTR may not be close to enough.
Right. So, those are, those are the issues we're dealing with, and we should know mostly where it is, probably no later than Friday morning, but then there's three weeks. And at that point, I think the governor has to decide what they do, and then there's a veto override session or a signing session, so.
It's just frustrating because it's like being in a lake and somebody drops a center block on you and says, well, keep dreading water. You know, don't worry about the.
The hard part is also the formulation of the budget. I know we've talked about wanting to, you know, budget, 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 and, I mean, these would just, they would throw complete, you know, complete turmoil into the budget processes we try to move along, so.
We're probably hearing about this.
Anyway, that's, that's kind of where we are right now.
Yeah, appreciate that update, Paul.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I know the thanks.
Yeah, it's a lot.
I said, thank you for this.
Oh, yeah.
All along, I was under it.
Oh, no, I just want to wish everyone a happy Easter.
Oh, yeah.
Good, good.
I know. I know. Yeah, I feel like we're, we're going so fast through the months. It's like, what are we, yeah.
Likewise. Happy Easter to everybody.
Yeah.
Enjoy.
Our commission of visitors, we really talked a little bit about the Live After Five that's Thursday night. A lot of our local artists in this community, I'm saying that because I got local artists, are going to be at various locations throughout the downtown. I think it's a good thing. They'll bring people in and there's been a lot of publicity about it, so I hope there's a good turnout for that. Commissioner Bowden, are you going to do, are you somewhere?
Oh, yeah, I'll be down with Meredith.
Okay.
Blossoming, the blossoming place.
Yes.
Happy Easter, everyone.
I definitely want to give a shout out to the Leavenworth city staff for hosting the Easter community egg hunt event.
Egg hunt.
Yeah, the Easter fest.
Yeah, so it was great, man. Just thank you to all the staff members that contributed toward that. And then, also, just to inform the citizens in the community, many of you all know I have a heart and passion for the youth and as well as our city as a whole, and we have a great opportunity to bring a national organization into our community, big brothers and big sisters. So, I'm encouraging citizens to please come out and attend the meeting next week. I would definitely love to hear some of your thoughts and express why youth are important for our city as a whole. With that, happy Easter and God bless you all. Happy career meeting.